The regular meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order for July 22. We will now take a moment for silent prayer or meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Entarios, will you do the honor? I mean.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to do silent prayer first. Please face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joanne, can you?
Okay, I'll go ahead and do the roll call. Commissioner Castellanos.
Here.
Commissioner Heng.
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
Chair Becerra.
Here.
I also would like to let the commission know that Commissioner Reyes has an excuse absence. He had called in last week to state that he was going to be absent for tonight's meeting. So with that, four of the planning commissioners are currently present.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes, tonight we have the minutes from the regular meeting, June 10, 2025. Does anyone have any amendments to the minutes? The minutes are approved as presented. Now we'll move on to oral communications. Would anyone like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Consent calendar. Is that the wrong? That's the wrong item.
We're on to a public hearing. The first item is.
It's the conditional use permit number 25-04, categorical exemption. Is that the one?
Yes, and tonight's presentation will be delivered by Melina Ramirez. She is our planning intern.
Good evening, commissioners. I will be presenting on conditional use permit number 25-04 for 547 South California Avenue. The conditional use permit is to allow the operation of a Pilates studio within our downtown plan. The parcel size is 4.82 acres. The unit size is 1,519 square feet. It's in our general urban zone, and it's located along South California Avenue. The surrounding uses are single-family residential and commercial. This is the existing facade of the unit. This is the site plan provided by the applicant. The unit boxed in red is where the Pilates studio will be located. This is the proposed floor plan. It shows the locations of the Pilates machines that will be used. The Pilates studio will be a membership-based boutique fitness that offers instructor-led group mega-former Pilates classes. There will be one certified instructor per class, four to six part-time and/or two to three full-time instructors a day, and there will be a minimum of seven to nine certified instructors that rotate weekly. There will be a maximum of 13 clients per class that last 45 minutes. The first class will start at 5:15 a.m., and the last class will start at 7:15 a.m. with a total of 15 classes per day. The business hours will be Monday through Sunday from 5 a.m. to 8 p.m. Planning staff recommends adopting resolution number 25-6168, approving conditional use permit number 25-04. Staff is available for questions, and so is the applicant. Thank you.
And the applicant is here. Daisy Serrano?
The public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Close the public hearing?
Open the public.
Okay, so now the applicant, would the applicant like to come up? Is her mic on?
I believe so, yeah. Okay. Hello, my name is Daisy Serrano. I'm a family nurse practitioner, and I currently have a medical clinic, well, I get some med spa here in West Covina. We focus on wellness and weight loss, which was why I thought this would be a good addition. So the studio that I'm proposing, it's actually a Legree studio, so it combines a combination of Pilates, weight training, and cardio. Normally, I attend these classes myself, and the closest one-two here is in Clermont in Arcadia. So I make a 45-minute drive, which is why I was like, this would be perfect. I already have a clientele with my medical spa, and I live within the surrounding area, so I thought it would be beneficial for the community since everyone's more focused on wellness currently. But any other? I'm a little nervous about it. So proper, I didn't know what to expect.
So is it Aeropilates?
No, so we use mega-formers, which are licensed by Legree. So Sebastian Legree is the one that introduced this method. So it's full body, and it's a lot of slow movement, slow and controlled. So you control a lot of, you work out a lot of muscles that you normally don't work out. So like normally, I go to the gym Monday through Friday, but my knee started getting really bad, so I wanted to do something that was, that wouldn't put so much stress on it, which is why I started doing that. So it's like anyone could do it, all levels. It's modified, they have like holders that you could just do slow and controlled.
On behalf of the commission, do you have any senior discounts?
We'll probably have some promotions when we start up.
Just an idea.
That was the highlight of today.
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
Are you going to make the town better?
Goal.
Yes, I'm just, yes, I think.
One pound at a time.
The looking offer meets all of the findings, which is to improve the well-being and just general service offerings in the community. So yes, I think that will achieve an improvement in the community. I've got no further questions.
Questions? No, I think it's a great plan. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Now we will close the public hearing.
Nobody, yeah, for or against?
Excuse me?
Anyone for or against, or would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the project?
I don't have any other cards, but yes, anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Nobody hiding out there?
Anyone opposed?
None opposed, okay.
Okay, moving on. Close public hearing. So any, well, discussion with the commission, anything?
I think if I may, through the chair, I'll just reiterate what I said. I think a project like this, a Pilates studio with a Legree approach, I have heard about that. I've heard it's a very unique new approach to fitness. I think it will benefit the community, which is part of the findings we need to make. I don't see any downside, so I look forward to seeing how this works out if, you know, we move in that direction.
Sure. I don't think I know of one that's in West Covina either, but also, hey, we can keep West Covina healthy.
Reopen public hearing.
Reopen public hearing.
In order to get licensed through Legree, you have to contact Sebastian Legree, and he only allows one Legree studio per city currently. So there isn't any in West Covina, had to get approval through him before moving forward.
Good for you. Congratulations. Close public hearing. Joanne, I guess, oh, no, they're right. So do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and second. I'll go ahead and read the resolution number and take roll call vote. The resolution number is resolution number 25-6168, and this is approving conditional use permit number 2504. I'll go ahead and start the roll call. Commissioner Castellanos.
Aye.
Commissioner Heng.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis.
Aye.
Chair Becerra.
Aye.
Motion passes for 01.
Congratulations on your CUP.
Next item, code amendment number 25-01.
Yes, I'll go ahead and deliver the presentation. Allow me a few seconds to move to the presentation location. Okay, this, good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the commission. This code amendment is to allow modifications to the existing drive-through food establishments through the conditional use permit process. With a little bit of background here, the, in February 2023, the city council adopted a moratorium on drive-throughs. The moratorium was established to allow the city staff to study drive-throughs because there was a concern with over-concentration of the amount of drive-throughs within the city. Then later on, a year later, in February 20, 2024, the city council adopted the development code update, which included provisions prohibiting the construction and new drive-through uses within, for food establishments throughout the city to address the over-concentration issue that was initially identified through the moratorium. And in June 17 of this year, the city council voted by minute motion to provide staff direction to explore amending the drive-through code to allow for existing drive-throughs to be modified to correct traffic queuing, traffic queuing, vacancy, or other related issues. So the draft code amendment is, that's going to be, that's presented to the Planning Commission tonight, will be related to the city council minute motion and direction. I'll go ahead and go through the changes that are being proposed to the code. The first changes, changes to the downtown planning code, which is a separate document from the city's municipal code. The table, the land use table, is being changed to allow modifications to existing drive-throughs in the T5 urban center and T4 general urban zones through a conditional use permit process. And in the same downtown planning code section, there have been standards, design standards that are, that are included into this document, and also it refers to find, that the findings that would have to be made are the conditional use permit findings that are, that are already in the city's development code. So it cross-references the city's development code section. And the design standards include, but are not limited to, the requirement that drive-through lanes do not obstruct circulation routes necessary to access the property, that the, that it has to be designed to be architecturally consistent with the center in the building itself, if the building is existing, that their, the drive-through lanes would be screened, and a five-foot-wide landscaping buffer would be installed along the drive-through lane, decorative paving for the driveway entrances, and congestion arrows for aesthetics. The building entrance is required to be facing the street. We will be requiring a queuing study or queuing analysis to make sure that the vehicles queuing on the drive-through lane and waiting to take, get their orders taken or getting, waiting for their orders do not spill over into the street, causing traffic. And also, drive-throughs involve speakers, and sometimes they put, the speakers can be quite loud, and especially when they're adjacent to single-family residential or residential uses in general. So there is a requirement that ambient noise level shall not exceed, or should not increase by more than five decibels. I'm sorry. And also, just to note that these, that, that these standards are already included in, in the city's development code. It's just that it was used for existing drive-throughs and also, and also new drive-through, mainly pharmacies and, and banks. And this section is for table 2-12 of section 2651 of the city's development code. It's the land use section, so it clarifies that modifications of existing drive-throughs, and the drive-throughs not only have to be existing, but they have to be permitted in order to qualify through the conditional use permit process. And then it cross-references the, the section where the findings and also standards can be found in the development code itself. And the section in regards to not allowing drive-through food establishments, which is at the bottom, where it doesn't, it's, the box is left blank, new is added to clarify that it is for new drive-throughs, so that there's no confusion whether or not, so that there's no confusion, it's very clear that existing drive-throughs are permitted to be And this is for subsection ABC of section 26-116. Mainly, it's just to clarify that it's for new drive-through facilities. The other change that I have incorporated in here is a change, a section that I have noticed in the new development code that was not fixed last time was subsection 26-127. It was, there was a clerical error in numbering, so that has been corrected, so that there is no confusion regarding the section and how it reads in the future. With this, staff is opening it to the Planning Commission for discussion, and if the Planning Commission has any questions available to answer.
Joanne, does this affect any current drive-throughs?
It, yes. So if there's an existing drive-through, and the drive-through is, is permitted, then they are able to modify, they're, they're able to apply for an exist, a conditional use permit to modify that drive-through. Like an example that was used when, when the city council had first voted, voted by minute motion was that the, the former Carl's Jr. site on Glendora, so it's a, the drive-through window is only accessible through the passenger side. So if they wanted to modify the drive-through so that it's accessible through the, the driver's side, then, then they would have to apply for a conditional use permit. But it's, it would be subject to review by the Planning Commission.
Okay, so those existing, it would be mandatory for them to make the changes?
I'm sorry?
Existing ones that don't.
It's, it would not be mandatory. If it's existing and they're operating, and if they don't want to make the changes, they don't have to, but if, but if they want to make the changes in order to fix a problem that they find that's existing on their property, then they, they have the means to do so.
Any other questions?
Joanne, do we have a, a map that overlays the T5 UC and T4 GU zones, so we can see what areas of the city this actually applies to?
Yeah, I can pull it up on, on the downtown planning code area.
That would be amazing. And while, while you're doing that, do we actually have someone who wants to apply for a modification currently, or is this just sort of a solution in search of a problem?
We haven't, we have not had any discussions with a particular future applicant that wants to apply for it, but we've had discussions with somebody that, that want, that asked about modifying their existing drive-through, but I'm just not sure if they would go through with it, because at the moment, they don't have a prospective tenant. So they would leave it up to their tenant to submit an application.
I guess for me, I just want to understand what, what areas are covered by, by each, by each zone, so that we can sort of tailor this specifically. I don't necessarily have a problem with, I don't necessarily have a problem with modifications as a general proposition, but I do question what the efficacy is of having a downtown plan if we're going to continue to potentially allow for, for future development that includes drive-throughs. That's sort of anathema to, to my understanding of what the purpose is of having a downtown plan.
It's a very, yeah, it's, I guess, small is subject, it's perspective, but it's from Vincent Avenue near the 10 freeway towards north of Glendora, right, right, just right south of, you know, the, like, the bowling alley area of Bolero. And then it's from the lakes, Glendora Avenue to, I'll go ahead and show the map. Because I looked at the, the downtown planning code map, it's, the page is separate, but I'll go ahead and go to the zoning map. I think that's, that would be a better perspective. While I'll go ahead, while I go ahead and set this computer up to pull, does the Planning Commission want to go ahead and open the, the public hearing?
We will now open public hearing. Anyone, anyone wants to speak in favor? Anyone opposed?
The main property we know this might benefit would be the Carl's and Spotless Burger. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. So I'll go ahead and pull up.
But, but you mentioned they're, they've only inquired, but they have not really moved forward with requesting it, or?
That's correct. They've, they've only inquired because they, they had potential tenants.
That was the deal breaker, right?
Yeah, that, considered that a deal, deal breaker where their, their agreement fell through because of that, but at the moment, they do not have, they do not have a tenant, so it would be up to the tenant to submit the application and do the remodeling. So I have the, the map of the zoning code, so the downtown planning code area, I'll go ahead and move my, my cursor. So it's basically the, the orange area that borders a downtown planning code area in, in along the 10 freeway.
Is, is that, is that zone T5, or is that T4?
So this is T4, T4 and T4 right along here, and then T5 is the plaza area in the dark, darker red color. And this is all T4.
So aside from benefiting the former Carl's, and with the 500-foot buffer, how many other possibilities would there be for, or that would this, that this might affect? Or is that kind of tough to predict?
It's, it's tough to predict, so what I can say is that it would affect, and it would allow all, any existing drive-through that we currently have at the moment to apply for a conditional use permit to, to make modifications to the existing use. It would not, it would not allow for any new drive-through food establishments in, in the city or in the downtown planning code area in itself.
Okay, so would not?
Yes. So if, as long as they're existing and their use doesn't change, then they would be allowed to apply for a conditional use permit.
So, but right now, there's what, a total of four drive-throughs in that entire area?
It.
I mean, five, maybe, I think?
There might be more, because there's that, that former Carl's Jr., the Chick-fil-A, McDonald's.
Burrito.
The Riro's.
Ronald's.
El Pollo Loco. Del Taco.
Uh huh.
And.
Peter Eloco.
I don't think.
They don't have a drive-through.
Their Waco.
They don't? No, they don't.
No. And KFC, does KFC have a drive-through? KFC.
It goes down that far? Oh, yeah, I guess it does. Okay.
Yeah, it's.
Interesting. Yeah.
So really, we're, we're looking at seven plus or minus.
Yes, about.
Two, maybe, that we're not thinking of. But really, they're, they're the ones limited to this amendment.
I guess in Bank of America.
Yeah, ATMs, yeah.
Well, Bank of Ameri, yes, Bank of America does have it.
Across the street from Carl's.
The, the, well.
It used to be Pacific Western.
Was it not Wells Fargo?
So maybe.
Chase, yes. I'm thinking Washington Mitchell, Chase.
Is that, is that even considered a drive-through?
No, actually, that one isn't, because it's also park-and-go.
Right.
Okay, so if it's not going to affect the allowance for new drive-throughs, but it will only allow for potential request for modification of existing ones, I think I'd be okay with that. Really, it's going to maybe open up the possibility for the Glendora, the end of the Glendora strip, or, or beginning, depending on how you look at it, to finally get someone in there, potentially.
Yes.
The owner can do their part to attract.
I don't, my only question is, is there a need to include the T5 area? I, I don't really see, I don't really know. I don't really see, I don't really know of anything in there that even has a drive-through.
We can.
I don't think we're calling the post office a drive-through.
Yeah, we can, yeah, it would not be considered a drive-through. Let me see, is there any drive-through? No, there is no drive-throughs in that location. So you can eliminate the T-5.
Yeah, if it's nothing in there, then I think we could make that modification. Well, then, I'd like to make a motion to approve this with the elimination of Zone T-5 from.
You have to close public hearing. Close public hearing.
Well, there's.
Motion.
Let me see if I've got any more questions. Okay, so make a motion to approve this with the elimination of T-5 from the plan? Or from the?
Eliminating.
This proposed code amendment?
Eliminating the drive-through in the T-5.
Eliminating it from the discussion because we determined that there are no drive-throughs in it, so we could safely exclude it from the conversation.
Right, so I'll second, assuming what you're saying is approving resolution 25-6169, recommending the city council approve code amendment number 2501.
Correct.
Just to clarify, we're talking about section five, actually, section six, sorry.
Yes.
Seven, where section six mentioned drive-throughs in the T-5 UC and the T-4 GU. You want to strike out the T-5 UC.
And then the word "and," yeah.
Okay, and, okay.
Sorry, is that what you, okay.
That was it. I'll go ahead and do the roll call. Commissioner Castellanos?
Aye.
Commissioner Heng?
I guess aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes. The recommendation is going to be provided to the city council for review at a later date. This item, the final decision on this item would be up to the city council. And now we are moving on to the non-hearing items.
Is that the planning commission's standing meeting rules?
Yes. And for the standing meeting rules, does the, do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff? Or is the planning commission okay with what staff had included in the standing meeting rules? Basically, it's a modified Roberts Rules of Order based on what we have, what we are currently doing and how the meeting is structured at the moment.
I just had one thing I wanted to discuss in, I think it's, is this, I guess it's section two, and then it falls under the section duties. We get down to, once a motion is called for a vote, discussion is terminated. And it says, voting on all resolutions shall be by roll call vote. And then so on and so forth. The only thing that I think ought to be included, because I do see in the privilege of closing debate, section 10, the commission member making the motion shall have the privilege of closing debate by calling for the motion. The only thing I'd like to say there is, in the event that there is a call for a vote, I think each commissioner should have the opportunity prior to the vote, because ultimately, if the vote goes one way or the other, to have the opportunity to make a statement as to why they are voting in the manner that they are at the time of the meeting, and that's all. No further commentary, just so that it is part of the record and not something that is merely just an add-on pursuant to the section 22. That'd be my only proposed change.
The reason why it was phrased that way is to align with the Roberts Rules, which, again, the inclination of, I want to vote in favor, I think it's a good idea, or it's not a good idea, that all comes out during the discussion. So it's already on the record in the discussion process. So when you finally get to the vote, it's just yes or no, rather than a speaking vote.
So I don't necessarily think that that is always the case. Occasionally, you'll have a scenario in which someone will say, okay, I'm ready and ready to go, motion to approve, and they get a second right away. And then the person who calls for the motion closes the vote at that point in time, and there's no discussion. So in that context, there is no opportunity for further comment. That's the concern that I have.
Right. The one thing that we, you know, Roberts Rules is crystal clear about the end of debate is because of the, I'm going to vote no because I'm opposed to, you know, so-and-so's counterpoint. And it turns into a very long speaking vote rather than roll call vote, yes, no. And then that reopens discussion rather than actually having all of the in favor of and opposed to be part of the discussion. And by the time it gets to a vote, it's a clean vote. And it's harder on the minutes, the person taking minutes. It does muddy the waters for the actual minute taking. And so that's part of making things easier for staff as well, to clearly have the motion. And when it's ready for a vote and the vote is called for, then the discussion ends and it goes right into voting. Because once you start the vote, it's supposed to continue until conclusion. And if we have a speaking vote, it's almost like inviting another discussion during the middle of voting. And for clarity, I think it does make it cleaner to have the full discussion of why you intend to vote a certain way on the discussion portion, and then just the vote be the vote. Once it begins, it goes through and everyone does their vote, and that's it.
Right, but under the Roberts Rules, there is the motion to end debate. So somebody could say, so even under that context, I think it actually muddies the waters because the Roberts Rules provide that you have the opportunity, somebody who wants to, to end debate through a motion, right? And they can do that, but that motion typically has to be subject to debate in and of itself, right? So the point is, is that under these rules, there is no debate of closing the debate. It's just, that's it.
Correct. And under Roberts Rules, there is that option to do the motion to close the.
But how, so how do you propose a counter-motion if there's a motion and a second? And the person who calls for the closing of debate and says they want a roll call vote, they can't, there can be no amendments to motions based upon these rules.
So I want to add that the rules of debates, which is number seven, it went through, you know, staff presentations, the rules are there. However, in recent years, it seems like we're, the newer commissioners, on item number four, if you look at number seven, which is the rule of debates, when we get to number four item, which is planning commission discussions, deliberations among commissioners, we spend very short, like a short, or not even some time, having discussions or having deliberations among commissioners. We basically skip right through that and just go to voting. So the questions he has was, you know, regarding the closing of the debate, sometime there may be commissioners that wants to have a discussions and wants to, you know, talk it over after we hear the publics and after we hear the applicants. So we want us to go through all that stuff. But at times, I mean, a decade ago or so, we tend to keep number four and have a longer planning discussions, deliberations. But in recent years, I find that we sometimes tend to even skip right through it and just go to the voting process. So what he was trying, Commissioner Nicholas Lewis is trying to say is that if someone is closing without any of the commissioners debating on it, that would be also a problem too. Because if we are debating on it, it's also on records, all the commissioners' thoughts, instead of skipping the debate and deliberations and going straight to voting. Because we don't really have why each commissioner is voting a certain way besides the vote that we voted for. So maybe perhaps that we can, like, remember the rules of debates and try to stay with the planning commissions, you know, after public hearing is closed, planning commissions as among the commissioners. We really do need to debate about it.
Well, you have to, the chair has to ensure that there's a discussion.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, is this is your opportunity to say whether the proper process, what the proper process should be. So if the proper process would include a motion to close the debate and then go to a motion, and, you know, if you have a motion on the floor, it has a second, it's still being discussed, right? Then at that point, you have your discussion on that motion. And when you're ready to move towards a vote, someone can motion to close the debate and go to a vote, or motion, or I call the vote, right?
Right, that's the current state, that's what the Robert Rules currently provide for. However, if you have a scenario in which someone, whoever motions and has a second says, I'm calling for the vote, at that point in time, there is no further debate under this proposed set of standing rules. And there would be no opportunity for even a counter-motion.
So at that point.
That's my question. How would that work?
How does that work?
That's not.
I hear what you're saying.
That's not a point of parliamentary inquiry. It's not a point of personal privilege. It's not a point of inquiry. Like, none of those things, none of those things apply in that particular context. So that's why I'm trying to figure out, how do you have that even be possible under our rules?
So if you're not ready to vote on the matter, right, and you have a motion, it's got a second, but it goes right to vote and you want discussion, if all of the commissioners vote no, that motion dies and you can discuss it further and have a new motion on the floor.
But there's no discussion if somebody says, okay, well, let's say I vote no, and, you know, there's a better idea, somebody invents a better mousetrap and has it ready to go, you know? And, you know, debate is cut off for whatever reason, that's the end of the item, there can't be a reconsideration because under the rules, the reconsideration can only be brought by somebody who actually voted on the prior motion as part of the majority. So that's the reason why I'm saying, it's a bit of a catch-22. I just think that, to the extent that you have one final opportunity to make a comment prior to voting, that each commissioner has the opportunity, that's it. And maybe it can be limited to a one-minute discussion or something like that, and we time it. I don't have any problem with that. That way, you know, if there is something to illuminate amongst our colleagues, that can be done. And perhaps we can actually, you know, avoid making potentially a bad policy decision or in favor of a better one.
So how I envision the worst-case scenario of this is, we start the roll call vote, we get partway through, some have voted, some have not, and then the discussion reopens and everything changes direction. What do we do with the votes of the folks who have voted? And that is part of the problem of not continuing.
Right. I am with you on that. What I'm saying is, no matter what, the vote goes forward after everybody has the opportunity, let's say, one minute, 30 seconds, whatever it is, they want to put their opinion on record prior to making a formalized vote. I think they should have the opportunity to do that. And then you go through the roll call. The roll call has to be gone through. Like, it has to be gone through. And, you know, if everybody at that point in time has a change of heart, they can vote no because they want to do something else, and that's fine. And then you can go back to further discussion. But that's.
The rules of debates is in here. It is not, it is in the books that we have here. However, it tends to be the fact that public hearing, when public hearings are closed, that's when the problem is, is that we jump right to number five, which is motion for voting. We skip right through the commissioners' discussions.
So I think incumbent on the chair to remind us, right, hey, but just a moment ago tonight, when we tried to get discussion going, there was none. So I think in cases like that, it's like, I think I was the only one who said anything. I think it's, we all have to force ourselves to do that because we're skipping that part by way of choice, not by way of not affording the opportunity.
By way of choice is fine, but however, if someone wants to vote just to close the whole rules of debate, that is a possibility too, by closing emotions.
Would you suggest that we go back to how it used to be, where we start counseling?
No, for example, I think in this case, whoever's in your seat, like, let's say someone, let's say me, I start, let's vote, let's vote, let's vote. You could be like, no, no, wait a second, we haven't had discussion. Commissioners, any discussion? Let's not, fast forward. And then after we exhaust that, are we all sure? No discussion? Okay, Commissioner Castellanos, now you could jump to your vote. Or, you know, just, I'm picking on myself for the discussion. But I think really, we could all remind ourselves and each other and the chair to not let me or anyone else skip that.
So anyone here is shy about doing that?
Right, yeah. And I think sometimes it could just be like, yeah, it could just be like, oh, shoot, we forgot, but not so much, like, I don't want him to speak, you know?
So let Dario be the bad guy in the hypothetical. But, no, no, I'm just kidding, my friend. But what I think, let's just have, if there needs to be, if there is a question on that and, you know, people, for whatever reason, don't speak up, then maybe what, I think just maybe keeping the standard rule of motion to end debate and go directly into voting on a pending motion, I think that probably makes the most sense. That way, you're debating that and then.
Yeah, I think that's a good additional step that helps remind us all, like, hey, this was the opportunity, right? And then if we're making a motion to end debate, someone could say, wait a second, no, I have one more thought I want to get out before we get there, if we're all okay with that. I think that added step could help clean it up and prevent someone like me from jumping the gun and trying to force it.
Always the bad guy, huh?
There are, again, that is one very, very clean way to have, again, the records perfect, great. For minute keeping, that is great to know clearly that the debate is over, the discussion is complete, everyone is ready to vote. That would clean up the minutes wonderfully. But it is one extra step.
Yes.
In addition, the alternative would be the chair saying, is everyone ready for a vote? You know, and taking that moment to say, is all the discussions are done? Does everyone have, has everyone said what they need to say? Are we ready for a vote? And that would be the alternative.
Equivalent, right?
If you wanted to do a less formal way, then the chair, it would be incumbent on the chair to say, are we ready for the vote? And a lot of times, you know, a lot of the bodies that do the same similar procedure, some do the formal motion to close debate, or motion, or I call for the vote, you know, the person who makes the motion can say, I call for a vote, I think we're ready. And at that point, it could be the chair that says, okay, are we ready for the vote? And just making sure that everyone has a chance to speak if you wanted to speak. If you didn't want to speak, then that's okay too. It's just making sure that everyone's ready and gets their thoughts out there on the record and has that opportunity before going motion, second vote. And if that is, if that's going to require, like, one extra motion to close the debate, and if you wanted to do it that way, you can write it into the procedure that the mechanism for terminating debate or discussion would be by motion. And then you would go right into actually the motion, the second, and the action item. So that is your preference, whichever way you decide you want it written. This is your chance to review it now, so you can figure out what works best for your organization.
But I guess the question is, who would keep the rules of debate, I guess, you know, number one, number two, number three, and then four, number five, in that order, instead of like skipping right through from number ones to number five?
The chair. Yes, the chair presides.
Not that we would skip number one to number five, but a lot of time I felt that.
Didn't I say that five minutes ago? Yes, it's the chair that would preside over making sure all the rules are kept. All right.
I think, just for ease of use, I mean, I think what we can do is, you know, if the chair wants to say, are we ready to close debate? And the chair determines that there's a consensus to close debate, then that's fine. If there isn't a consensus. If there isn't a consensus, then vote, and then there's, then there has to be a, a, a motion and a second to end debate. And, and that's it. I think that's, I think that's the easiest way to do it.
I, I, I think it's important that all of us members that we do need to debate about it as commissioners after closing. That's important. I remember years ago, it seems like everyone was debating about it, and it's like that process was never skipped through, going straight to motions to vote. However, in recent, you know, like I said, I, I felt like maybe it's, we get newer commissioners every so often, more often than in the past, that it tends to, we just skip right through discussions and just go straight to voting after closing of, so that, that creates a problem itself in the sense that on documents, we don't know how each planning commission's, I guess, behind the voting. So if we have a discussions, we can hear whether it's a positive, negative thoughts of, you know, the debate.
Yeah, and we could help each other, right? Like, if we forget, we could say, "Wait a second, we, I think we missed a step," and then it kind of is a soft, like, non awkward, you know, refocus.
More organic and it's more flexible, for sure. If you wanted to make any changes to how it reads, you know, staff is willing to incorporate your suggestions, or if you have actual text changes that you'd like to make, this is your time to figure out what works for you.
If, if there, if there can be consensus on this, what, what I would propose is that instead of having the motioning commissioner be the one who can close debate, we have, we have the chair ask, "Is there consensus to close debate on whatever the item is?" And if the chair determines that there's consensus, then we can go forward with a vote. If, if a dissenting commissioner determines that there is not consensus and they're moving forward with that, they, they can call for a priority motion, which must be heard over all other motions, to continue the debate. Or there can be a priority motion to close debate.
So I'm looking at section seven, and in that list, you're talking about item number five, correct?
I believe I'm talking about item number, hold on, I think, I thought this was like third, right?
It would be between four and five.
Did I, did I miss it?
Number seven, between four and five.
Section seven, rules of debate, and in that little list, in that order of how...
Oh, sorry, it was, sorry, yeah, it would, it would go into that list, but it would also fall under section 10. That was...
Section...
It would also fall under section 10 as well. I think that's where the clarification should be made. I don't know if there's any other thoughts on, on this from my fellow commissioners, but if, if, if you want staff to bring it back, I'm, I'm open to that, and we can finalize it, I would, I would hope, next meeting, or alternatively, if we want to, if anyone is okay with, with any specific language, I'd, I'd be okay with that too.
So Commissioner Lewis, are you suggesting that in section seven for item number five, it would be a motion for a vote? Motion for a vote or motion for closure?
Motion to continue debate, I think, I think would be the, the title.
Would that not be the same or the inverse of the motion to close debate? So if you have a motion to close debate, which is actually in the Roberts rules, you can have the motion to close debate, and if that fails, the debate will continue?
Right, correct.
So it would be an alternative, so if there is consensus, would there need to be a motion or...
So, so my, my only question is, is let's say hypothetically, there is the belief by the chairperson in, in that context, that there is consensus when there isn't consensus, that that would be the only reason for having the, the option to motion reopen debate, because the chair made a determination that debate is closed based up, based upon their perception that there's a consensus, when there may not be. Because they closed the debate, so the motion would be to reopen. Does that make sense?
I think so. It's just a matter of how do we write that in, because other than...
Well, then, I'll, I'll say this, so we're not, so we're, so we're not belaboring the point and keeping everybody here for that, because I, I, I trust that, that you can craft...
Well, I want to make sure that I understand you clearly, though, because if there is a unanimous consent, right, so if the chair is reading the dais correctly and everyone is done talking and if...
Chair, chair deems there's unanimous consent and says, "Okay, Madam Clerk, vote, roll call." And then, and then some commissioner says, "No, no, 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 motion to reopen debate." At that point in time, they should have the ability to, to, to lodge that motion as a priority motion. That's, that would be my, my own, it's again, it's a, if, if we're leaving it to discretion, you know what, never mind, let's, let's not have discretion, let's just do, let's just do a motion to, to end debate for, for each and every, each and every item, it should be easy. I, I don't think there's any problem.
Item number five, so I'm looking at section seven, and in that list, for each item, the order of discussion, so number five says a motion for a vote...
Right.
Which seems, it sounds like a motion to call a vote.
Yeah, so...
So in that space, we would say motion to end debate?
I think motion for a vote is actually a motion to end debate. Is it not under the Roberts rules? That's my understanding.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what I've read, that it's equivalent.
So I, I think the only thing that I would change, just because, so we're not, so we're not getting into discretionary issues, is, is at, at the end of debate, there shall be a motion to close debate prior to the voting on, on any motion.
So at what point in this list would you...
That would be item number four, right? It would be planning commission, discussion, deliberations among commissioners, and then end the debate.
And we could add the slash, like, slash, end debate.
End debate. Sorry, you picked that again?
I think it would be a separate next...
Okay, so then we would create another number...
Correct.
Bump everything down, so it would be number five, and then a motion for a vote would bump down to six, and planning commission roll call vote would be seven.
Oh, sorry, a motion for a vote would, would, would still be five, because you're going to, you're going to make a motion and a second for whatever the item is, and then you have the motion to end debate after that, and then the roll call vote.
Then you would have a motion pending for the vote.
Correct.
I wanted to make sure that I'm...
That's exactly, that's exactly right, yes.
Say that again?
Okay, so motion for vote first.
Motion for vote first, so let's say you want to approve the item, motion approve, we say, you know, Sheena, you, you, you say motion approve, I, I second. At that point in time, then there's discussion, and then we, we motion to end debate and have the vote. At that point in time, there's, there's a vote on ending debate, and then there's the, the actual roll call vote on the motion itself.
So what does a motion to vote mean now?
That would be the action.
That'd be the action. So like, so like, for example, tonight, we, we approved...
CUP.
We approved CUP 25-01. So somebody would say, "Motion to approve CUP 25-01," there's a second, then discussion, motion and debate, then the vote on the motion to approve that CUP.
So we have to discuss what we've already approved?
No.
No, it's really, I think, the, the main thing is just to make sure that nobody feels like they weren't heard or didn't put something on the record by way of like things just moving fast and, and getting confusing. So it's kind of like just an added step that says...
Unnecessary. I mean, we're already at a number four.
We're still doing public hearing, and then we have planning commission discussions, and then number five is this motion for voting, and then, then what?
Yeah, prolongs it. I mean, I think the key is just, let's just make sure that we're all finished and not leaving anything out before we make the final vote. I think that's the, just, the overarching objective is just about, how do we say it?
So the, that also be minus, oh, I'm sorry, is that also remind us that we can make a mo, another motion besides this motion? Like, if you make one motion, let's say to approve...
The opportunity for counsel.
Then some commissioner might make another motions to disapprove or half approve, I don't know, but anyway. So it's an opportunities to make another motion, or remind us you can make another motion, instead of just one motion that one commissioner suggested. So if...
So it's an opportunity to debate again?
Basically, I think this, what we're talking about is most useful, like...
Which was number four already. So we want to put discussion, deliberation, and debate in there, maybe?
Actually, it's just, it's one cleanup to make sure everyone is agreeing they are ready to vote. So what I have from the notes of this discussion is that five would be the action motion, right? That you're, what action you're going to do, approve blah, blah, approve CUP number, you know, X, Y, Z, whatever. So that's the action motion, and that you get the second, so it's pending, it's on the floor. Then if you wanted to just gauge the dais to see if everyone is ready to vote, number six would be motion to end debate, and then number seven would be the roll call vote. So we would add one more number between five and seven, or prior six that's there right now, and make that number seven, adding in between there, motion to end debate.
So we get all the debate in there if you missed the first number four? And then at the end, you, if you have anything left over that you wanted to, you know, say something, then that's the time, and then we close the debate and once every...
Right, and then if, if you had not had that opportunity to say what you wanted to, then that would be your chance to not close the debate and continue with discussion. And then once you are ready, that motion to close debate could come back again and say, "Motion to end debate," and to act on that motion that is pending, the action item, so whether you're going to approve ultimately the CUP or not. And then the last item is the vol, the roll call vote.
Sometime it gave us an opportunity as well to hear what other commissioners' thoughts. Sometime if you go through roll calls and we just go through one by one, and at the end, you hear everyone, but the first one didn't hear everyone's thoughts. So, I mean, that give the first commissioners, I'm not sure if they want to hear everyone's discussion.
But when you ultimately get to item number, number seven, which is the actual roll call vote, it would go through the roll call and not stop. It will just go by, from beginning to end and just take the roll, and your vote is logged. So at that point, it is done, unless there's a motion for reconsideration or, or to rescind. So that would be the, just to make sure that everyone has spoken, so...
It also gives someone a chance who's not happy with the vote to keep on going.
That is true. But again, even without that specifically written in, that can happen. So it's just making that an official step to end debate.
So some of the, I guess some of the commissioners' debates or recommendations are just recommendations too, so this do get passed on to the city council, and then they ultimately at the end make the final decision sometime. Not so much, not so much us.
Correct. And I think, I mean, for this current commission, I don't think we necessarily need this kind of cleanup so much. I think it's most useful in scenarios where there's a lot of dissent, a lot of debate, a lot of tension, a lot of, you know, then it cleans it up. But I think if we all help each other, work with each other, listen to each other, and, you know, then it's, I think it's less for us and more for just the integrity of the process.
And if I'm hearing correctly, the, paragraph number 10, the privilege of closing the debate, you wanted to remove that privilege from application to this body, even though it's in Roberts rules. You wanted to specifically take that out.
So, so I, I don't think that, so I, I think they have the privilege to call for the vote, but the, but it's still subject to the motion to, to terminate the debate, is my understanding. Maybe I'm misunderstanding something.
Under Roberts rules, calling for the vote immediately terminates the debate, and you go right to vote.
Right, but in, in this, in this context, though, I think, I, I, I think what the, what the issue is, is that you can have a debate on a whole slew of different, on, on a whole slew of different topics, and then somebody at the very end says, "Okay, I'm going to motion for this," and, and then they get a second, and then there's no real substantive debate on what is, what is on the floor. That's, that's my concern, and that's, that's what I can see can happen in the absence of a motion to end debate.
When someone has made a motion, usually in the past, if they wanted to modify it, then they do it then. I, you know, "Well, I will second it with the modification of this," and they will go on and add their portion, and then the first will, you know, follow or accept, or we, and someone else will.
Alternate motion.
So that, that also happens as well, so it's not that they're getting left out. I think we're just making the process longer. I mean, and the debate is where we're supposed to say that, you know, like we are right now. We're saying, "Well, this could happen and that could happen, we should put this." With that, everything's happening right now in the debate, and we haven't motioned yet.
Up to you as far as the body, I mean, what works for you, whether it is a formal motion or, it's, there is no unanimous consent, then a motion needs to be made. That, that could be just a verbal check-in on the dais, is everyone ready to vote? And if someone says no, then the, then it's not closed and reopened, it just never closed. And then if someone does want to close it, would have a motion to end the debate. That, that's up to you as far as how you think it would work. I just don't see the motion to end debate for every item being...
And this is what I see in the foreseeable future. This is going on and on. Are we ready to vote?
But, right, but, but that's, that's why...
And this is the reason why I won't vote for this, so let's...
That's why you have a motion to end debate.
Who wants to motion?
I think it helps with new, with new commissioners, if we were to follow the steps and the rules of debate, it helps a lot already.
The chair should be the lead, and that's how it should go. And it, you know, if the chair doesn't allow them for the debate, then they're not doing their job.
That's the problem. If the chair is not doing the job, at least we have the rules of debate, it kind of helps out a little bit.
We have four other people more than ready to make sure the chair is doing their, you know, as they've done to me, to you. So I don't understand, can we, can we vote on this now?
Yeah.
Or we can continue and have some more thoughts about it and come back.
We could do that as well.
Could do that, so, yeah?
I suggest that, as Chair FMA, I suggest that we vote, the, the planning commission vote on it now mainly because of the, the portion of the secretary of the chair after tonight's meeting, there, there will be no deputy director or planning, or committee development director for a period of time. So somebody, a designee would have to fill in the spot of secretary. So under the current rules of order, there would be no planning commission secretary.
Okay, so we will vote on this?
And then later on, you can also, at the, the next, or later on, you can bring it back for discussion to make those changes.
Because we need a secretary?
Because we need a secretary, yes.
Okay. All right. Either way, we'll bring it back or...
Are we ready to vote?
What are we voting on?
Are we still debating?
We can vote on, the chair, it seems like there was consensus on, on Commissioner Lewis's suggestion. You can vote on that, and if it does, and you can try it, and if it doesn't work out, then we can, it can be discussed and be removed or modified in the future.
So are you saying that we need to all vote for the extra, or number...
If that's the motion that is made, then if somebody would, will be, is willing to make that motion, then you can vote on that motion.
And to reiterate through the chairs, so basically it would be first, second, and then we say, "Are we all willing to close debate? Has all debate been had? Vote." And then final vote on the, what was the motion? That's, that's what Commissioner Lewis suggested, right?
It gives someone the opportunity, if they don't get their way, to beat a dead horse. So let's take a vote.
But that person also can make a motions to another motion on top of, you just don't want commissioners to kill and, you know, the discussions, because sometime it might affect...
This, this is one thing we could do, because I, I agree with Chair, you know... This, this is one thing we could do because I, I agree with Chair, you know, it's kind of if, if you have a good chair that with the help of the commission, you kind of don't need it. But, you know, if we, if we go this direction and it becomes cumbersome, we could also say, you know what, it seems like we don't need that, shall we eliminate it? Or would you like to go a different direction? I mean, I'm pretty flexible at this because at the end of the day, I really don't mind.
I think we're all adults. We don't need to, you know...
Getting the bullet points in is really the key.
The one thing I would say is if, if there are, if there's wording that says the chair, if there is consensus, the chair can request a vote on the motion or request a motion if, and if there is no unanimous consent, meaning someone is not ready to continue, then it is not closed and debate continues until a motion to end the debate is made.
I like that. I like that.
I just want to make sure that we're not stuck without a secretary for the next meeting in between. So I want something that can be flexible where you could try it out. If you do have some sort of trial run in the next couple of meetings and it doesn't work, definitely this can come back for an amendment. This has not been revised since 2013. It, it has been a very, very long time. So a lot of the things that are currently on the books as the last version are really outdated, so.
So after a couple of months, the chair can actually, or any commissioners can actually bring this item back.
You can request that it be on the next agenda and bring that back to say, hey, this isn't working, let's figure this out.
Is your suggestion?
Yeah, could you repeat that? That was, that was good.
Um, so if you're looking, section seven in that little list in the order, five would still be motion for a vote or motion for an action, right? That would be the primary motion, motion to approve the CUP, motion to approve a variance. Okay? So that would be your actual action, right? And then number six would say, if there is no unanimous consent confirmed by the chair to proceed to a vote, then the debate will continue until a motion to end debate is made and passed. Then you go to number seven and actually take the vote. So it doesn't close the discussion until there is a, a motion unless everyone is ready. And that way you don't have to go through the formal thing and the chair can say, are we ready to vote? If everyone says yes, you don't need a formal motion, you go to the next item and go to the vote. But if there is no unanimous consent and someone does not agree, kind of like how you adopt the minutes, right? If there are no changes, it's deemed unanimous consent. You move forward. So you can move forward to the vote without having a formal motion. But if someone is not ready to end the debate and wants to continue and they haven't said their piece, they get that chance to do that until a motion to end the debate is actually made.
Well, that makes sense. So, I mean, you're not going to debate, we've already voted.
Correct. Once you...
Mike, that's my...
Correct. So you don't get to number seven, which is the actual roll call vote, until everyone is ready to vote. Right? So it's still in discussion. If you're not done discussing and, you know, Commissioner Castellanos says, oh, I have one more thing I want to say, then it hasn't closed yet, right? So then after he's done speaking, the chair can say, are we all ready to vote? And if there is unanimous consent and everyone says, oh yeah, we're all ready, then you don't have to have a formal motion to end the debate and go to the vote, you just go to the vote.
So what's the extra item? So we have public hearing closed, planning commission discussion deliberation among commissioners. What's number, what's number, the new number five?
Five is the motion, the action motion, your primary motion to approve resolution number blah, blah, blah. Approve variance number blah, blah, blah. Approve CUP. That's your action. Your motion that you're going to take the vote on.
And then a five and a half, there's an insert in five and six.
Number, we'll, we'll put it as number six, but number six will be, if there is unanimous consent, the chair can move the item to a vote, the next to number seven. We just go to number seven.
It's not always a unanimous consent.
So I, I, I think I, I understand, and, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, but I think I understand what your concern is, Madam Chair. I think your concern is, is that you have one person who's just going to basically filibuster, right? But if you, if you go down to the attachment number one, look on, look on attachment number one, Robert's rules, the second page, there's a motion to limit debate. It's the fourth motion down, vote count required to pass. It's a two thirds. So you, so you can, you can terminate debate on a two thirds vote in that context. It's not a, at that point in time, you have the ability to get around unanimous consent.
And, and also when we vote on something, I mean, obviously most of the time we're unanimous except maybe one. So I don't know who's disgruntled about not getting to talk more.
See, I, I view it, I view it slightly differently. I think that, that we are a collegial body and it's, it's good that right now we, we have good times amongst each other, right? Okay? My, my perspective is in, in the event that we run into a situation where it's not so good times, you have factionalism and all kinds of craziness, then somebody runs rough shot over, over a minority at that point in time, that'd be my biggest concern.
Well, my point was, so if we voted four to one, there's no amount of debate that we can add that will change that vote. So that's a moot point.
So you're, you're talking about the vote for the actual action item, whether you're going to approve or not, correct? The ultimate vote on the item?
Yes.
Once it's done, it's done unless there is a motion to reconsider. So that's done. So once you already get to the vote, I don't think that's an issue. It's, what, what is...
See, my, my, my thing is we can't even get to a vote right now and we have discussed the heck out of this already. We can't, I, I've already called three times, are we ready to vote? Nobody has said yes.
So I'm, I'm willing to make a motion, sorry, I, I don't want to cut you off though. I am willing to make a motion.
Am I correct? Nobody has said yes. I've asked times.
So...
The discussion continues.
Direction, we can't vote on a question mark.
But, but this is, this is our new rules where we're supposed to say, are we ready to vote? We're supposed to get an answer. We can't do it.
Because, because the, we need to iron out the details. Like if we leave it as is or if we add anything to it.
Well, you can motion, but nobody's even done that. Are you ready to vote? Are you ready to make a motion?
So I, I, I believe, I believe...
I think by now we are ready to make it.
Yeah, I believe Commissioner Castellanos mentioned and asked, asked you to repeat the language that you, that you provided, which I know was a little bit of a mouthful, but I think it was about three, three sentences, right? And in effect, it says that if there's, if there's unanimous consent at that point in time, that, then you, then you go to step seven. If there isn't unanimous consent, then debate continues until there's a motion to, a motion to end debate that, that passes and then goes to, to the, the ultimate motion, whatever it is that is currently pending. That's my understanding. And if that's the case, I will motion to approve with that, with that language and then remove specifically in paragraph, or I don't know if it's paragraph or section 10, the, the language regarding the commission member making the motion shall have the privilege of closing debate by calling for a vote on the motion. I, I think that the rest of it should remain, once the, the roll call vote has commenced, it shall continue without interruption until completed. Beyond that, that's my motion.
So you're going to make the motion to make the change in section seven to add, between the current five and six, we'll make number six, seven, and add a new six that says, if there is unanimous consent to go to a vote, the chair can move the item to a vote. However, if there is no unanimous consent, the debate shall not close and will continue until a motion to end the debate is made and passed. And then we will renumber planning commission roll call vote to number seven. And the motion is also to strike the first sentence in section 10. Okay. Thank you for clarifying the motion.
I will second that.
I'll go ahead.
Our fellow commissioners okay with that change?
I'll go ahead and read the resolution number, resolution number 25 dash 6170. And I'll go ahead and take the roll call vote if the commission is ready. Yes, please. Okay. Commissioner Castellanos?
Aye.
Commissioner Heng?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Chair Becerra?
No.
Okay, motion passes three, one.
Also at the end, we can bring this back and revisit this as well because this time for the voting is mainly to make sure that we have a secretary.
Correct. So then what we will do is as part of the minutes and actually after we clean it up with all the markups and things removed, we will have a clean version and it will circulate as approved. And if, after a couple of meetings or even after the next meeting, if you don't think that that works and as a body you think it's too cumbersome and you would like to go back to the original wording, you can request that it be on the next meeting and we can bring it back anytime for you to amend and tweak as you need to, to make sure it's as efficient for your use as possible.
Now bring a sleeping bag.
Also, not only this particular items that we are for the planning commission standing rulings, it's not only this one, any planning commissions actually can bring anything that the planning commission felt that needs to be revisited or, you know, looked at as well. Is that correct? Not only applied to this one, also...
Yes, that has always been the case.
That's correct. Okay. Come on. We're now in commission reports and comments. I don't think we have anything, wait. Sorry.
To the chair, I have, I have no reports or commission, or comments of any sort at this time.
Um, commission, does anyone have anything to report or offer or comment on?
I, I, I do have, have one item and sort of an unusual thing to even bring up, but it falls under section two dash seven, four of the municipal code pertaining to investigations, hearing and recommendations to the city council for improvement and beautification of the city. One thing that, that I have seen around the city since the, the passage of, or the implementation, I should say, of the placement of no parking on street sweeping day signs is the utter haphazard nature of the implementation. It is an embarrassment to the city and I really think that this is something that the city council needs to investigate. They need to find out who is actually doing this and, or who is in charge of the implementation and they really need to start asking some questions. For example, I have seen countless numbers of signs, no parking on street sweeping days in fire zones. That makes no sense. I live in a neighborhood that has exactly 25 parcels. You want to know how many signs there are in my neighborhood? There are nine signs. That is insane. And that's not just my neighborhood, that is most neighborhoods in which this has gone up. And it is crazy. The amount of money that we must be spending on putting these signs up is outrageous when a, a street or a parcel tract that I live in could have a single sign that says no parking on street sweeping days, entire block. The city of Baldwin Park can do it. I don't know why the city of West Covina is incapable of doing this. We look, our, our situation is not quite, but almost as bad as the implementation of the no parking on street sweeping days in Covina on Puente Avenue between Second and San Jose. It's embarrassing and I really, really want to see this, this come back and so, because I'm, I'm happy to provide pictures of this insanity and it is insanity and it's an embarrassment. We deserve better. We really do. So I'd like that to, I'd like, I propose unanimous consent to bring that back because I am very happy to show my fellow commissioners what a disaster the implementation is. It's an embarrassment. The city council needs to know about this and our city staff needs to do something about this forthwith. It is terrible.
You mean to say this sign just went up or it's been there?
The signs, the signs are going up in front of people's dead center, in front of people's parcels. I mean, there, it's haphazard.
Came about or...
Yes, they're new. This, this, this has happened and it is, it's, it's disgusting. It should not be something that, that anyone here who is a taxpayer should have to live with. I'm sorry, nobody voted for that. I know our city council certainly would not have implemented something so haphazard if they knew that this was what was going on. But this is what's going on.
So I'm hearing this as a request for staff to bring it back as a presentation?
Yes ma'am.
And if you can...
That is correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm...
Absolutely.
But is this part of, is this part of planning commissions or is it the approval of sign, part of engineering?
What I'm hearing is that Commissioner Lewis is requesting for staff to look into it and come back and do a presentation on what the status is, what is, what is being implemented or how, and for them to start looking into it, bring it to the planning commission for a presentation at a future meeting so that you can either make a recommendation to the council for whatever, but so that, so that you can review it and actually properly discuss it on a noticed agenda item. So I don't want to get into a discussion today with Brown Act, but so that it comes back to you as a presentation for you to fully discuss, to articulate and to have, perhaps in the meantime, if you have photos or whatever, you can bring it to staff's attention and they will prepare a presentation for you on the issue.
That sounds like an engineering department issues.
We'll have them start looking into it. Okay? So that would be a request, correct Commissioner Lewis?
That is correct.
Okay.
Pursuant to West Covina Municipal Code, section two dash 74 subsection C.
Okay. Are we ready to move on?
We will work on agendizing that, that presentation for a future planning commission meeting day.
Okay, community development directors report. Joanne, do you have any items to report?
Um, yes. So on, just one, would like to invite the public for the summer concert series. The summer concert series is going to go on every Wednesday and the last day would be next week on July 30th. It's from six to nine PM. And on July 31st, it's going to be the last, uh, community workshop for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which will be held at Palm View Park from six PM to eight PM. And on, on August 5th is National Night Out and Touch a Truck event here in the Civic Center and it is from six to nine PM. And also on that day, just wanted to remind the public that there is also a city council meeting that's going to be held at seven PM here in the council chamber. And I just wanted to wish, well, I, I just wanted to let the planning commission know that tonight's meeting is my last planning commission meeting here with the city of West Covina. My last day for, um, working with the city would be at the end of the month. So thank you for all your assistance, help and guidance, um, in support in my position as deputy community development director and I appreciate everybody and I enjoy, I enjoy working for the city and it has brought me many different experiences and, and just career opportunities. So I was offered a position in, in another city that I took and am taking because of the experience that the city has provided to me. So I will miss everybody and thank you for, for everything.
Oh, we will miss you.
We're gonna miss you, Joanne.
We're gonna miss you for sure.
Oh my, what city is it?
She probably shouldn't say.
No.
No, we don't want you to say. Thank you for everything, Joanne. Thank you for all of your professionalism, your help, your everything, your guidance through, you know, even with me, with becoming the commissioner, you're very helpful. Thank you so much.
During the transition, I'm working to, in, I'm working with the city manager and also staff to, so that there's going to be a transit, a clean transition. And I, and planning staff is very capable of handling any planning issues. So I appreciate them as well.
Joanne, do, just, just curious, and I, I don't, I don't know if you even know the answer to this. Do you know who is going to be stepping into the leadership role for CDC at this point in time on a temporary basis or, or is that still unknown?
It's still, it's still unknown. We're working on a number of things. I don't want to publicly say it because it might not pan out that way. And I don't want, I, I don't want to make an announcement that, that's not, that may not happen, so, but we're working on something.
Understood. Say no more. Thank you again, Joanne. Really.
Thanks. There is no council actions to report at this time.
Okay, so that being said, meeting is adjourned, 8:33.